Okay, we're gonna get started with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. It is Monday, December eighteenth at five thirty-one PM in the Susan Tully-Lively Boardroom of the eighteen eighty-seven building. Um, I'd like to take roll call, please, Mr. Townard.
All right. Let me just share that screen. Hey, Mr. Andre.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Gayheart is not here yet. Uh, Mr. Getton.
Here.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Here.
Mrs. Costak.
Here.
Mrs. Reckles.
Yeah.
Mr. Sparrow. Here yeah. And these students are not available.
Okay, we do have a quorum. Um, I'll note that the meeting has been noticed per state statutes and um, I'm before we get into the presentation by the ad hoc committee, I'm would like Mr. Truand to just kind of give a little bit of a synopsis and a background. And we'll go from there.
Okay, all right, thank you. So, yes, my pleasure to introduce this evening's topic, which is dear to my heart. It's school finance here in Wisconsin. And what we're gonna share with you today or this evening is is the report from the ad hoc financial stability committee. And you may recall as a board, this was established back in the spring after the failed referendum and the purpose of which really was to bring together a number of stakeholders across the school district and community. And we formed a committee of around twenty twenty-two people that represented businesspeople, parents, staff, school board members, administration, um, to to go through a series of kind of learning a little bit about school finance and putting together some recommendations as part of that process. Now, we knew going into that with a diverse group like that, our hope was that we probably would come to some maybe some consensus, but we also realized that that may not be the case. So we we organized ourselves such that we provide the opportunity for what we call a minority report. So you're gonna see this evening a presentation, then you're gonna see kind of a minority report. And then because you may not get enough financial information, I put together a couple of things in the area to share with the board as well. And Cheryl Dillner, I think you're doing the the minority report. And before I go further, I want to thank all of the committee members that are here this evening and those that even couldn't attend tonight for your your time and dedication to this process, because it was a lot of time. Um, and I appreciate all of your efforts in terms of participating in that process. So with that, um, we have two of our committee members that are gonna present this evening. Uh, community members here as part of the committee, Bill in here and Eric Jones have volunteered to kind of walk through the presentation. So without any further ado, I'll turn over those gentlemen.
Okay, thanks, Bill. I think I've met all the board members before, so anyway, but for those of you that I have not met before, my name's Bill Lederer. Um, I've worked for the last three months with this committee. And at our final meeting, Eric Jones and I volunteered to review the scope of those meetings along with some recommendations. Uh, we worked with twenty others who represent a broad spectrum of the district's residents. Committee members review district documents, ask in-depth questions, and I believe openly and honestly express individual opinions. Some conclusions received a pretty wide agreement and others had polar opposites, which I think you would expect if you look at a community like Elkhorn, you'll find that exactly out in the community. There are some things where people will say, yeah, that's it, and some say, no, no, no. And so I think that's what you have to work with and you have to figure out ways to move ahead. So with that briefly, I'm gonna let Eric start. He's gonna he's gonna kind of go through and take our work from the beginning.
Thanks, Bill. Um, for those who don't know who I am, Eric Jones, uh, born and raised here in Elkhorn. Uh, probably lived here, I'm trying to figure, about forty-five out of my sixty years. Um, my background, I was a teacher, high school teacher, that's me. And from there, I went to become a school administrator. I was the Bill Truand at Monroe Public Schools um, for about three years back in the early nineties before a lot of the problems started in about nineteen ninety-three.
When we were younger. You're still young.
Yeah, right, right, yeah. So, um, then I came back, uh, ran the bus company in Elkhorn until about two thousand and six. And uh, since that time, I've had more close company. So that's my basic background. Um, I'm gonna point to Jason when we need to change the slides, if that's all right, or I'll just say Jason next or something like that. So let's get right into it, talking a little bit about what we did. Um, we we started back in September. There was two hours, sometimes two and fifteen, something, almost three hours uh, that we met uh regularly with a large group of people. We talked. We want, we first thing is you had to educate and we had to educate about what is the history of school finance? How do how do the schools get their money? Where do they get their money? And and that was uh an educational experience for some of the people that weren't involved in that. Then you have to talk about, well, where are we today? What is the challenges facing our education system today between funding, between uh the Act Ten, which we'll talk a little bit later, and some other issues? How does Elkhorn look when we compare it to other school districts? Are we a big spender? Are we a low spender? Are we a medium spender? How are we spending our money? That was looked at during that time. Uh, we looked at comparing ourselves to other um, uh, school districts in southeast Wisconsin and a little bit broader throughout the state to see again, how are other school districts handling it? How are other schools districts doing it? And we'll talk a little bit about that. We talked about the April twenty-third, uh, twenty twenty-three referendum. What happened? What was it? How did that all come about? And what can we do to be better? And then we came to the financial stability recommendations, which we'll get to uh later tonight. Jason. The purpose statement, this was the purpose statement of our committee. The purpose of the Financial Stability Ad hoc Advisor Committee was to examine the school district's financial budget needs over the next multi-year budget, and I emphasize the word multi-year, we're not looking at a one-year thing, for the purpose of developing strategic financial stability recommendations for consideration by the Elkhorn Area School Board. We're not gonna provide the answers, sorry. That's not what we came to do. Uh, we came to give some uh great recommendations, some not-so-great recommendations, some ideas, some not-so-great ideas, and we moved forward from there. The committee stakeholders, we had a very diverse group. We had school board representation. We had administration representation. Uh, we had teachers, we had support staff, parents and community, and a lot of the community representation were their parents, but not parents of kids currently in in the Elkhorn Area School District, but a lot of them are there. And here's the list of them. I'm just gonna uh, because we are uh on television, I think, I'm gonna go through the list quick. And if they are here in the background or a board member, uh, please raise your hand. Uh, Chris Burgess is a parent. Uh, I'm just gonna go through it. Jason Cleveland is a teacher. Uh, Cheryl Dilner is here and she'll be speaking a little bit later. Uh, Jody Estman from the support staff. We had Devin Getton over here as a board member, Karen Hall, I saw Karen as a community member, and also I want to put past her as well. And then that's right, uh, Jennifer Lee, parent, is here. Uh, I'm Eric Jones, Dan Keel from the administration. And Scott Kunis is a parent. And Lori Kyle is here and also is a parent in the past and community member. Uh, Bill Lederer.
Uh, is it Lederer? I don't even know.
Lederer.
Okay, uh, from the community and uh Sue Lively is here, I saw as a community member. Cindy Rayber is also here. Ed Sparrow, school board meeting, uh, member is not here yet, hopefully comes here in a bit. Jill Stebbins is a teacher is here. Uh, Jason, uh, administration, and Bill Truand from the administration, Kelly Walbrandt as a parent. Uh, Greg Wells, community member and past uh principal, and I can't remember what school. Simmons, thank you. Uh, Rob Handel is a community and uh Teresa uh is here as well, she's a board and a community member. So it was a it was a diverse group, as you see, I mean, and we all came with different ideas, we all came with different thoughts, preconceived before we got there and uh then, you know, we are where we are. So then we get to, I just said, just to make sure I'm not out of order. History of the finance and how did we get here? Wisconsin basically sets the rules. The government, the state government sets the rules. We end up having to follow them. The rules have changed. They're not always been the same since uh when I was a school administrator back in the eighties and early nineties to the mid-nineties, again in the late nineties, again in the mid-two thousands, it's where we are today. How did we get to where we are now? That's late September, see, I'm talking about that, but yeah, late seventies to ninety-three, uh, when I was in there, ninety-three, the Act Sixteen, um, which basically was really the start of, people starting to think, oh, schools are taxing too much, schools are taxing. Well, how do we need to start limiting uh, uh, tax raises every year? Open enrollment nineteen ninety-eight, the Expansion Act, that that allowed for kids and to go to other public schools and also providing funds for some private uh parochial schools as well.
So I may cut you off, so Act Sixteen, could you explain what what happened? What was the difference between seventies up through ninety-three and ninety?
Well, seventy through ninety-three, basically, um, the school board could really tax to their content, basically, or to what they could get approved from their local. They had really all the authority. Um, so yes, schools watched their budgets. Yes, they controlled their budgets. Yes, they didn't over what I call, I like to think that we didn't in Monroe, overspend and just tax to it, but there wasn't a a limit to what we could do. Act Sixteen brought in the first part of the limits. Uh, nineteen, yeah, and then two thousand and eleven was probably what everybody's most familiar with. That's the Act Ten. Basically, the Act Ten was a very dramatic year in Wisconsin, um, as everybody knows. Uh, it just basically was controlled, uh, not controlled, it basically was eliminating the bargaining powers of schools and then uh of the unions, and then that put it back on the local school districts to negotiate individually with the different uh groups within the school district. A lot of state aid was taken away that year because districts were were able to reduce their expenses. Um, and that's what happened in the twenty eleven Act Ten. So then we get into, let's look at our budget. Um, when you look at our budget and and it's, hopefully, a lot of people could see that, you know, when you look at your expenditures and you think about your expenditures, you think staff, well, yeah, our staff, um, and every, this is probably very, very consistent, if not, I I can't imagine it'd be much more than one or two percent difference. When you look at your uh, your your staff salaries and then you look at the health insurance and you look at other benefits, other benefits might be uh some payments in lieu of maybe some of the people taking different assurances. It might be for some retirement programs. But all that adds up to nearly eighty percent, about seventy-six or seventy-seven percent if I remember correctly. So that is a big chunk. So when you start about talking about controlling your budgets, now you start talking about controlling not, it ends up being people. It really does. It ends up being programs. It ends up being staffing levels, et cetera, et cetera. Your other costs there, uh, student transportation is about five percent. Um, you have uh, other ones here, I can't read that out there. Um, you're you're basically, what you really have control of in the individual buildings is up at the top or the other purchase services of about five percent. That's your paper, your copy machine costs, your your custodial supplies, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
This is student travel.
Student travel is about five percent.
Capital, non-capital, and this is open enrollment out.
Yeah, there's a fun, basically, if you lose students out, then you lose that revenue going out.
And this one's utilities and buildings.
Yes, yeah. So where's the revenue come from? Well, majority of it is coming from two different places, really. And there's a third one I'll touch on in a second. The the state aid uh is coming, which is the purple area, the tax area, which is the yellow, and then the down in the right there, the open enrollment, that's a big piece for Elkhorn specifically, because you go around, there's that little pie there, that piece of that pie there is often negative in a lot of different school districts. They lose enrollment. Oh, they're not gaining enrollment from where people look at Elkhorn and think, Elkhorn's a great place, I want to send my kids. So we we benefit by that. Uh, nearly about fifteen percent of our revenue comes from kids attending your state aid coming to us because kids are in our school district. The rest of it mostly is federal up in the upper left quadrant there. You get some federal, you get some grants um, a- as well, and so per pupil state aid based on different formulas depending on what programs you may uh, you may add. I think we're okay here.
As you see, Eric, that, those pictures right there with the arrows, that represents the revenue cap in terms of the resources that of the total revenue.
Out of all the revenue, the two, the 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 tax and this and the uh state reimbursement, that's the quote-unquote revenue cap that the state of Wisconsin utilizes to determine how much you are able to go on that yellow side from the purple. So revenue cap one-on-one, it's a formula which I'm not going to try to ever figure out because I tried to do this for a while uh, in in different years, but it controls the amount of revenue a school district can have through the combination of state state equalization aid and the operational tax level. Well, we all know what the operational tax level is. That's how much we can tax. The state equalized aid is different for different communities. It's based on both the enrollment, it's based on your your uh property values within the uh community itself. Is it going down? Is it going up? Is it going up a lot? Per pupil uh property value overall, it's 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 complicated, but it's not, but let's just uh, for simplification uh purposes, the state equalization aid is basically looking at your enrollment, looking at how much your property value is and how much the state thinks that you should have to equalize compared to the upper and lower ends of the uh property values of other communities. Seventy-eight, say seventy percent to eight percent of our revenue is controlled by the revenue cap formula. So as an example, uh, per pupil amount of ten thousand, student enrollment thirty-one hundred, gives you a quote-unquote revenue cap of thirty-one million. That's how much you can, that's your revenue cap. The next line says, okay, so there's your revenue cap. We know it. It's thirty-one million. Now, the state aid, general aids, which is basically how they determine how much money that they came up with for us, for the for this particular school district, the remaining of it is the maximum amount that you can levy without a referendum, uh, which in this case on that sample is fifteen. So this is kind of a historical little uh graph here, um, and we're talking about uh, uh, inflation, indexing, how the state actually gives the school districts funds, et cetera, et cetera. So if you look at, there's there's two different colors there. There's the uh actual annual change, which you could see goes up on a on a graph. Basically, every year, the state was contributing all the way up to about two thousand and nine, they were always giving a little bit more. Well, then the arguments came, then there wasn't enough money, et cetera, et cetera, so you had a couple of years to donate. And you had a couple of years where they didn't give as much. But if, and I'll look at the shaded, the light shaded area, that that is like what if, that's the what if, if they would have kept on the indexing. Act Ten is the line on the negative end that Jason's outlining there. That's basically um done. I mean, it's basically you had to come up with your own, through your own school districts. Then they started kicking back a little bit more, then there was a year where none, a little bit more, and then the last two years there, that would have been the COVID years. If I'm correct, and I think that's right. Those are the two COVID years that basically the state, because of COVID, was not financing the school districts, and we'll talk to them and when we look at the actual budget, well, how the heck did we do that? How did we actually pay bills without the state aid? Well, it kind of came from the federal government. We'll get to that a little bit. Eric, go ahead.
Jump in here just to kind of give a context to this, because this this chart really is the history of the revenue caps in the state of Wisconsin. So for the first sixteen years, um, starting in nineteen ninety-three, the annual increase in the per pupil amount, keeping in mind that the other factor was your enrollment. So if your enrollment went up, the revenue cap went up, your enrollment went down, it went down. But the per pupil amount was adjusted based on the Consumer Price Index, and it was the March-to-March change. So every year when we go through the budget cycle for sixteen years, we pretty much knew from year to year, okay, what's the Consumer Price Index gonna be, and the state would certify it in March. That gave us time to finalize the budget by July in terms of what our funding was. Since then, you can see that number has been all over the place. And and that's what creates the challenge, not only for our school district, but every school district in the state, because the predictability, which was there for sixteen years, no longer exists.
And I think it's a really big, when you look at from Act Ten going to the uh to the present time, that if you just would have looked at that indexing and how it continually go up, and there's a a graph or another sample, we'll show you in a minute, that shows you how that would have affected us if they would have just kept that going. But instead, through politics, through actual having enough state funding, and I'm not blaming anybody, because the state only has so many dollars as well. And it it just fluctuated so much, and it made the school districts from year to year have to go through hoops to try to figure out how we're gonna balance it, how we're gonna do this, how we're gonna do that. Uh, Elkhorn has been fortunate a little bit with our increased enrollments. Uh, that's helped us a great deal, and as well, when we get to a little bit on how we operate with our uh, uh, costs.
Um, would you say, Bill and Eric, that in this time period, it was really rare to have a referendum to exceed the cap?
I.
For school districts?
Yeah, I I think the only exception would have been, probably would have been for a school that was doing a large capital project, say, say, building a high school.
But I mean, I mean one for operation.
Right, but that would have been operational for the additional cost making utilities.
Oh, probably a combination of second and referendum.
Correct. I think that probably was what people would reference in terms of operational referendums during that time period.
I hope I'm not stealing any thunder, but I give an idea, this light purple, which would be the gap.
Yeah.
When I calculated this last year, that came out to approximately eleven million dollars for us as a school district, as far as a gap between.
That's cumulative.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I would probably, I haven't done the math, but I'm gonna guess that it's. So how did we get by those two years of COVID uh to where we are now? Uh, basically, the federal government, as everybody knows through COVID, they were taking care of uh people from the cities to the schools to the states. Big blocks of money were given to the state. The state had to come away probably through the, again, through the equalization aid formulas of of whatever, how they did that, came up with, basically, it's called the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. It's how to get the schools to get through. Originally, it was supposed to be possibly, if we were still in COVID lockdowns and and virtual and everything else, to actually pay for a lot of the different things. Luckily, we backed off on that, but it it did allow the schools then to be able to utilize those funds. They changed it three times, right, Bill, or at least twice they did. Or they kept allowing you, okay, now you can use these funds for other purposes other than straight mitigation. As you saw in the first year, uh, we used it all for the COVID mitigation strategies, the masks, the furniture, the signs, the split, uh, you know, so kids don't cough on one another, and stuff like that. Uh, the second year was also, again, still used for the COVID. Then we were, the the state lightened up a little bit, allowed it for some addition. We could use it for additional needs for staffing, well, for uh special ed needs and for regular education needs. And then again, the one last time, which is for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, to use up all those funds that were there. Um, and and we, it was to help balance the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, as well as the current budget, helping to offset or to um, uh, add revenue to be able to pay the budget without having the need to dip even further into reserves or put us in a more precarious position than we are today. So now, I think I uh get to take a break for a few minutes and uh, Mr. Lederer will take over for a few minutes.
Thanks, Eric. Um, we've just gone through about thirty years of history with stuff, from the nineties up to where we are today. And we spent, I would guess, probably the first three or four of our meeting, half of them, going through each one of these slides and going in-depth. And if you're not careful, you could really get lost in the weeds with this stuff, because that's what's out there. That's what your state deals with, and and that's kind of how they put forward with it. So I kind of try to look at it a little bit differently when I've had to work with this in in my history. And I kind of look at it, you kind of use an analogy, and it's been used quite often. It says that school operations all, a lot of times is compared to a three-legged stool. And if you go back in your history of three-legged stools, they they started out as milking stools, and you can figure out how that was, how that all worked out. But days gone by, those three-legged stools offered stability for the farmer, well, allowing for some flexibility, adjustment and service irregularities, and also gave some flexibility to whoever was sitting on top of it, because they had to stay on top of it. Well, in this case, your school district sits right on top of that stool. And as Eric just went through when he talked about this last part, one leg of that stool that affects how your school district operates is the district's enrollment. And if you increase enrollment, it means you get more revenue. Well, if you have less students, then you get just the opposite. And the number of district students, as well as students from other districts that attend through open enrollment are all involved in that. And as you look at this chart, you can see the purple, that's the Elkhorn, and it goes back, you know, about ten years or whatever. Those are the Elkhorn enrollments. And you can see that they remain fairly steady for the past ten or twelve years, and they're trending down a bit. So if you kind of look at at what you have, now, in the last those ten or twelve years, open enrollment, allowing students from other districts to move back and forth wherever they want, that that has caused changes for a lot of districts. In Elkhorn, you can see it started out fairly small, and over the last six or seven years, it's starting to grow, you know, at a pretty good uh cliff there. So it does have a significant rise. And typically, that enrollment rise, in my experience, is due to a positive outside view of the district. People that are in other districts look at yours and say, oh, that's a place I'd like to go have my kids go. And all of those increases over time, basically, that requires special effort by your administration and staff to make sure that they have a positive experience for all those students and for the parents. And if you do that, then that grows. So the more you can grow that, that helps you with your revenue, because you get revenue for that. And if you start to decrease, that helps offset some of that decrease. So if you look around Walworth County, those who've been here for a long time, you know that a number of years ago, Walworth County was all of a sudden going like this, like this, like this. Elkhorn started going like this, Genoa City went like this. Everybody was going like this. All the districts were growing, and now districts are starting to shrink in size. So districts all have a similar problem, but those that can have kids from other districts come in, that helps them immensely, and those that lose them, that makes it even worse than losing your own kids. Now you lose all this other revenue. And it's something you can't always count on. Your own kids you can't count on. You only know there's so many places to live and so many kids. So that kind of, you know, brings that part together. And then Eric also went through a little bit before I get the long-term debt. Um, your federal, state, local levies, that's the second leg of the stool. So you got the number of kids and how much you get from them. You got all the money you got coming from state, federal, whoever, your local levies, that's gonna go there. And then that third leg of the stool, that's your district budget and expenses. Those three things gotta balance. If any leg shrinks or any leg grows, you have to adjust, or the stool's gonna tip over. So typically, if things are growing, you're getting more money, you're getting more students, you're getting more revenue, you have more money that you can spend, because it's gonna cost you more, and everything kind of grows and you keep it right there. So that's something to keep in mind as you're thinking about this. I think it's an easy way to kind of understand how all of that works. So if we want to flip to the next one, Jason. Um, the district also has a long-term debt schedule, and it's laid out for you right there. The district has had um, some capital referendum in the last eight or ten years, and they're kind of laid out there by different colors. So there's payments to be made. It's kind of like paying a mortgage off. It's set out there, and you've got so many years, and you start making payments. And unlike your mortgage, you make one payment a month, the district makes a payment every year for the um, for the interest and one for, or a couple of them, and for the principal. So they got big chunks that come out at different times of the year, because that's that's the way they like school funding to be. But anyway, you can see that if you reduce that levy for that, because that amount of money is levied separate for every year. It has nothing to do with running the school. That's the amount for those uh things that were approved at referendum. If you reduce that, then your levy goes down. And um, it doesn't allow you more money than to spend on operating the school. It just says, you got less, and you're paying off your debt as you go along. And you can see it here, it's gonna go along for five or six years. Then it drops a chunk for a couple of years, and then it drops a bigger chunk down about eight or ten years from now. And if all goes well, at twenty thirty-five, everything's paid off, the district doesn't owe any money on any of that. And everybody, if you're still sitting on the board, you have a great time, and say, hey, we got this done. It's kind of like paying off your mortgage. You used to go and burn the thing, and and everybody was happy. Yeah. If you keep a a student population that stays similar, you'll be in that state. If all of a sudden your student population grow, grow, grows, then people will come back and say, well, we need more classrooms. Or if there's some major upgrade in your buildings like this one here, I know it's very old, it's been around for a long time. I've been around Elkhorn for a long time. It used to be high school and probably a bunch of seventh and eighth graders in here and everything else at one time. Used to be high school and probably a bunch of seventh and eighth graders in here and everything else at one time. At some point, you can only refurbish, you know, redo so much before you have to start with something new. But those are all things that school boards have to face over the course of time, and the community also looks at that. Okay, we can flip to the next one, then I think, Jason. Some other things that that we also looked at, and Eric talked about this a little bit, these are per student spending. So we have some information there, Bill put together, and this is all public knowledge, you can get this off the Department of Public Instruction. It shows how many dollars per pupil are spent by a number of districts that are in this general area and then went outside the area a little bit, just because of, uh you know, trying to get some similar-sized districts, because there are a lot of small districts in Walworth County too. So you can see over there, there's Fort Atkinson on the left side, and they're up there about sixteen thousand dollars, and you kind of trail along. And you you kind of draw a line that, there's a line also that you look at the state. If you take all the school districts across the state, what's their average, including Milwaukee and Madison and Beloit and Gibraltar and all these little districts up north? And you try to figure out what's the cost per pupil. Now, that's kind of a management thing, because if you're in like Williams Bay, you can have a really high per pupil cost, because you don't have many pupils. And you got a lot of tax base there to kind of put it over, so that's, it's skewed that way. But if you look at that, you can see where Elkhorn sits on that, and way over on the right side, their per pupil cost is one of the lowest. And I've been in Walworth County for, I don't wanna say it now, but fifty years. And um Elkhorn School District has been one of the lowest per pupil expenditure schools in in the county for for that amount of time. All of that started out way back when, when the folks that sat in these seats said, this is what we're gonna spend. And then, as Eric said, in the nineties, they came in with some of these revenue limits. And the revenue limit said, well, starting out next year, you can increase your spending by so much percent. And all the people that sat on these school boards said, oh, my God, guess what we've done? We haven't spent very much for the last fifteen or twenty years, now all of a sudden, we get two or three percent increase. So does the school district that's spending a thousand dollars a kid more than us, so you get thirty dollars and they get fifty dollars more per student. So it it starts, a gap starts growing, and that doesn't stop, because that process continues. So that's kind of what happened in there. Um and it was, it was a way to keep everybody kind of where you were at. To, but at the same time, those that were at the higher limit came out a whole lot better. And everybody else started struggling to figure out ways to do it. And the state said, at one time, came in and said, well, we're gonna have this neat idea, because everybody's struggling with this in some places, and it's not fair over here, and not fair over here. We're gonna try to bring things together, so we're gonna take our state aid formula, and what we'll do is, we'll um kind of take that and we'll help out people to help balance a little bit, and we're gonna fund in the whole state, two-thirds funding. So that was a big thing, two-thirds of all the money's gonna come from the state, so you guys down there in Elkhorn or wherever, don't have to worry as much about that. And then they figured out where everybody was, and they said, well, because you're here, we're gonna give you a little more, and you're over here, you get a little more. And if you ended up in Fontana like now, they get pretty much zero state aid, and so everybody got different things. So that was kind of the help, and we're gonna give two-thirds. So that was a good idea, all school people said, hey, that's great, we're gonna get two-thirds funded all the time, and some of us will get more than two-thirds. I was in Genoa City for a number of years, and we got like eighty percent. There's no tax base in Genoa City, you don't have homes like, you know, Lake Geneva has, you don't have a a commercial base, nothing else. So you kind of went with that, and it it looked good. Well, after a while, everybody down at the state got tired of hearing folks from the school districts come and say, well, you gotta keep giving us this funding, well, we don't have so much this year, so we're gonna give you sixty-four percent. And then it was sixty-three, and then it was sixty-two, and they got tired of hearing people come up there complaining about it, because people at school districts say, call your representative, tell them, they said it's on the books, you're gonna get this two-thirds money in the state, and now they're cutting back on it. So people did it, and so they said, well, tell you what, we're gonna change this around a little bit, and we're gonna let you guys figure it out. So if you want more money in your district, you go to referendum and get it now, and we'll just kind of help you out what we can up here. If you have a good year, we'll give you some, if we don't have a good year, you might not get as much, and that's kind of where we are right now. And that's why everybody's doing one of these numbers with referendums and things, and that's how it goes, and so you just have to do that. So up there, there's a revenue limit or a cap illustration, and in that yellow box, it shows if certain numbers, like Bill was talking about before, in those last few years, had gone through, and they gave three hundred dollars forty-two a year or three seventy-one, that would have come normally. That's where your numbers would be. However, you were over in that purple area because of the COVID stuff, and you got some money, which helped you offset what you didn't get from the state that year. But it's always has an effect. COVID money is there, it's here, it's there, it's spent, and guess what? It's done, it's gone, you don't get anymore, that's how the federal government works. Here's all your stuff, take it, do it, whatever it is with it, then we're done with you, we're onto something else. Whereas the state money, once you get three hundred dollars this year, and then next year you get three twenty-five, and then three hundred and fifty. If you had added that up for those three years, that would still stay with you, and then you'd get an extra two or three hundred dollars this year and next year and whatever. You'd have that money in, and bottom, it shows the difference there, I think, Bill, if I'm right, and Jason. The difference to this district was about four point six million dollars. They had the money to work through those years, but the money that then, once that was gone, the money you didn't get in that yellow box, that's what you'd have to keep going now. And so it becomes a real manipulative thing as far as when you look at state budgets. They don't budget like you do here, where they set a budget, and we're gonna spend that amount of money, and at the end of the year, we darn well better not be overspent, because that's what they tell Bill, leave it there. Sometimes you underspend, you get a little bit, but at the state level, they just carry it over, and if they don't have enough at the end of the year, guess what? Oh, they have to pay schools part of that money they owe you for the year that they said they'd give you, or we don't have enough in June. Oh, our school year ends June thirtieth, well, they make up a little thing up there and say, well, we're gonna pay you in July, we'll pay you the second of July, and guess what? That goes into the next state budget, and they push it on ahead, and so they never have to deal with it. You deal with it, if you're at zero, just like you are at home, zero, zero. So those things kind of go through there, and so.
Yeah, I just wanna reiterate, so what that chart is showing, that these two years of zero-dollar revenue limit increase had the state funded at that, those two purple bars, that's equivalent of a four point six million dollar difference, just these two years.
Right, yep.
And and the numbers from that and the the uh yellow chart were put together by the Legislative Fiscal Bureau. So they were asked by our legislature, one of the legislators said, if the state would have continued with the per pupil tied to the Consumer Price Index, which they did for this for sixteen years, what would that funding level look, and then that's just the comparison to our actual.
Their job is to take actual numbers, they can't like make it up and fudge something and say, oh, well, it's over this way or that way, they have to take actual numbers. So a couple of other things we looked at too and said, well, we're looking at spending compared to other districts, how does this district deal with staffing? And on the left side, you have your student to staff ratio, that's all your staff at the buildings. Um and it could be uh custodians and teacher aides and everything, and you can see Elkhorn there is eleven point three. And then on the other side is just student to teacher, those are classroom teachers, and you're at fifteen point seven seven. And if you look across, you can say, how do you compare to other districts? Well, another anomaly here, as you're looking across, you see to the right of Elkhorn is Lake Geneva. But there's Lake Geneva Joint One, which is their elementary schools, and Badger High School, Genoa City Union High School. Well, the high school obviously has a high student to uh staff or teacher ratio, but if you look at your high school, you do too. Because as they get up to the high school, you've got bigger class sizes and that, and when you're starting down here, you're starting with fourteen or fifteen or sixteen or eighteen kids per grade level down in the four Ks and and all of that. So that, if you put, Lake Geneva, you should put the two together, divide by two probably, and you've you've kind of come out. But you can see there, pretty consistently across there, Elkhorn has a higher student per staff ratio. So it's it's not like you got, well, we only got five kids per teacher, and you know, that's, you know, we gotta look at that. You always have to look at that every year, is how does your staffing go? And it changes, because it can't, you can't always just draw a line, it it's numbers, but it's also kids. So as you go through, it's like, well, we got so many third graders, and so if we're gonna have, say, say you take twenty, it's usually a high number, but twenty for teacher. And then all of a sudden during the year, you get some more third graders in, usually you give yourself a little leeway, and you try to make it maybe eighteen. So that if you get one or two more in, you're not looking at twenty-two or twenty-three. So that's, you gotta kind of be careful with that, especially on the other side. But you can see in general that your district compared to neighboring districts, you have a fairly high, you know, teacher to student ratio. And, you know, again, it's counting numbers, but you also have to look at who the students are in that teacher's class. Because sometimes you can get by and you could say, wow, I can get by and I could take twenty-five of those kids next year, no problem. And some other years, you're like, whoa, twelve of those kids would put me over the edge, you know? Because kids have different needs, and your job is to take care of them all. So that becomes part of the thing, is you look, and that's, I'm sure what your administration does, is how they look at doing that.
And I think where this has an impact is when you look at seventies, five, seventy-six percent of the operating budget is staffing.
Yes.
And when you go to look at then, what are budgetary reduction strategies, which have been both staffing? Are we starting from a point where we're at a low student to staff ratio, and there's, you know, arguably, we're overstaffed, and you could make reductions? Or are we already starting at a ratio which is at a very high um student to staff ratio?
But and sometimes you don't have a lot of schools here, but sometimes you get a shift at a grade level where, you know, there's some students, let's say, third graders at this school might have more students than third graders at another school, but your alternative is to say, well, we're gonna take these five kids on the edge, and we're gonna have them bust over to the other school next year. Parent, your child's gotta go there to even us out, you try to balance that out, so you don't have these ups and downs with families and stuff like that. So part of that goes into the whole thing. Um, one of the other things that that Eric mentioned is, we did take a look at at last year, talked about things. Last year's last year, this year's this year, it's always the way it is. And I think in general, um people looked at things and tried to pick out ideas, it's very hard to understand unless you could talk to every single person that voted or didn't vote, of why things went the way they did. Our idea was, for a lot, was, we've got all this information, this is what we gotta look at, we gotta give you a plan for tomorrow, and for the year after and the year after. And we'll go from that, and if there were mistakes made or whatever, that was something that the folks that are in charge have to make, you know, make a difference in, so.
Did you want me to quote on those?
Um, why don't you? Hold, hold on, sorry.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah. Um, so I think that's, that's pretty much my chunk of this, I'm gonna give it back, Eric, he's gonna catch up with some of those other things.
Thanks, Phil. And in a, uh, just to keep going on from what Bill was talking about, I think that uh we're gonna go past that one, uh the referendum, what went wrong. Um, I I don't wanna beat a dead horse on what's in the past, I wanna, I think the group looked at it as, there were mistakes made um from from communication to the way it was presented, to the way it was written and everything else. But I think we have to look at where we are now, how we got to where we're at, and how we're going to solve or come up with ideas um in the future. So I'm gonna start talking a little bit about um our our plan, or our ideas, or what we came up with as a group, which ultimately comes to the school board responsibility of how to implement our ideas, because these are just ideas, we're not telling the board what to do. We're just saying, hey, we looked at all these things, we think that these things are all kind of important, um including the budget reduction and uh revenue additions. But the one thing that never gets talked about enough, in my view, is the history of budget reductions that was presented to us. This school has has dealt with budget issues for, and most schools do, by the way, for a long time. And the district's done a lot over the last ten years of of making um some, what I call somewhat dramatic and and effective cost-measuring um techniques. One of the things that saved, I uh and we'll talk about this, but just as an example, this saved the district tremendously this year, it was just on the health insurance. Back in the uh pre Act Ten and back in that particular time, the health insurance was never able to really be looked at. Now, there's so many different ways, and the districts looked at it with this help, um the uh self-insuring that's going to save. But that's not any panacea, because that could start ticking upwards, because there's only so many times you can do that. Um, but we've, we've got like two or three pages here of everything that the district's done, and I'm not gonna go through it, and maybe Bill's already handed this out, everybody in the board who's been here that long knows it. But the district's done a lot, between revenue additions, open enrollment allowed it, uh option school, et cetera, to budget reductions, health insurance, attrition, uh eliminating programs, eliminating staff, increasing class sizes, and things like that, have been done for the last eight, ten years, so the, nothing that we're gonna be talking about um uh should be, oh, now the Elkhorn has to look at what we need to do. No, I know you've been looking at it a long time, but now uh the rubber hits the road. We we need to figure out where we're gonna move now, not just for next year, but uh for the year after. The other thing, we had a lot, we're, I'm only gonna touch on about uh five items, but we had over twenty items that our group had talked about. Um and then some were drastic, some of them were not so drastic, some of them were minor, but there were a lot of issues, and we had to narrow that down. Um and at some point, I'm sure this uh list will be given to the board as well, but we had to narrow it down to figure out what's going to be palatable, not just to uh the board, but more importantly, to the community, what can we, what can the community handle, what can the community accept? What do we want for the school district to go forward, how do we want the school district to look? So we we came up with a, some bullet points here, we'll go through one by one. Um, so last year, well, this is this uh current year, I mean, we, the, how we got to where we are now, we did, the school district limited this, the salary wage increases to one point four, one and a half percent, which is amazing to me when you look at what inflation's been since twenty twenty-one. Twenty, since twenty twenty-one, we're up over twenty percent inflation, and I don't think our teachers and administrators have gotten a twenty percent raise. Uh next item, uh frozen administration in this past year. Um, that saves money, because you're not paying that additional money, and the and the administrators got together, looked at it, and said, you know what? We have to put skin into the game as well for the district, which is amazing to me as well. So in twenty twenty-three, the administration supervised salaries were frozen. This is the big one, the change health plan, which you, uh, the school board knows, but maybe the community, uh, community doesn't really know. The increase of that the school district had would have been over thirty percent if we would just stay status quo, that's not acceptable. So in order to do that, the plan's been changed, now it's more self-insured. Um, hopefully, we maintain a very healthy staff and maintain uh the program moving forward, but this past year, that was over a million dollars in savings. The health held on basically not increasing anything, we didn't buy anything, we didn't do anything new, we didn't add anything, we just kept everything frozen from the prior year. So nobody got any additional uh things, uh computers or whatever might have been needed at the school district level, unless it was donated or unless it was through grants. Um, and I don't think I'm missing anything with those two things, uh maybe uh kicked in for some people to help, but the general tax part of it was frozen. And, okay.
The prior year's is hyperlink there, so.
That was the sheet, uh, that was the sheet that I had held up to show you everything that was done uh for, uh, and and if you need that, I'm sure Bill will get all that uh as a summary sheet to the school board. Um, and if anybody in the community wants it, uh, I'm just gonna contact Bill's office and get it to you. Uh, or I think myself, I don't mind, I take phone calls all the time.
We'll, we'll post the presentation online.
Okay, great. So um looking at the twenty twenty-three um uh budget, and then forecast out with any, without doing any um um cost reduction or whatever, uh and and or additions, you're looking at the budget of twenty twenty-three. We we came down to the bottom line there of still being about two point three billion dollars short, where uh Jason's circling. Where did that money come from? Well, that money basically is coming out of what the school district has uh in what's called the fund balance. Basically, your fund balance is a, shows the fund stability of your district, it's money that is, I I don't wanna say it's all, I mean, it's used during the year because of how revenue's gotten to us, until the revenue gets to us, tax money and the state aids. It eliminates the need for borrowing uh from uh this, usually from the, through bonds or or through short-term borrowing. Um, it eliminates all that issue, and it it gives your yourself a great bond rating when you go out for having to do long-term uh lending. And as such, it's like a credit rating. And as such, it's like a credit rating for a mortgage uh provides that. So the district's been very healthy. Uh, in the fund balance, but this year, we did take a two point three million dollar hit. So what if we don't do anything moving forward? Well, next year, if you don't do anything to move forward, we're gonna be nearly five, nearly four point seven eight. Um, and then it goes up from there, six point two, seven point six, to nearly eight point eight over the next four years. It's not sustainable, you run out of that fund balance. You end up having increased costs due to borrowing costs for short-term spending. You got increased uh borrowing costs for long-term spending. At some point, we're gonna have to do. Then not tomorrow, but ten years from now, you're gonna have to do some more borrowing for building uh improvements, et cetera, et cetera. If you have a, go to, tell a, a, a bond agent, say, yeah, we don't have any money, and we're, yeah, that's not gonna work. Um, and how do you pay your bills when you're at uh, you're twenty-six, twenty-seven with a negative uh. Uh, money coming in versus going out, it doesn't work, it's not sustainable. We have to address, how are we going to. Get us to be sustainable for not just twenty-four, twenty-five, but uh moving forward from there.
Hey Jason, um, real quick, uh, on that one, um, Eric, I think, I think you had a little bit backwards. You were looking at the difference between the revenues uh and expenses, that's the difference between the two of them, the fund balance was below that.
I explained that well, the fund balances where Jason's pointing out.
Yes.
But you have the fund balance at the end, at the beginning of this year was thirteen point uh nine, I think, and then we.
Twenty-four point.
Well, that's twenty-four point four-three percent. Yeah, that's our percent of, of uh the fund balance to budget. And then we had to take two point three million from that to balance the twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
Yeah, beginning of the year, so these numbers may be small, we were right at about fourteen million, just on the fourteen.
Right.
At the end of this year's budget, we're projecting eleven nine six thirty-one.
And the next ones are just projected out uh of where you're gonna go if nothing is properly done.
And, and just to kind of jump in here with, this is what we call our forecast model, so it does show four years. Projection in terms of both revenues and expenditures, so. And, and the assumptions, because any projection has certain assumptions, are reflected kind of in that, that pink area, which, which assumes. Salary adjustments of about three percent a year, insurance going up ten percent. Most other expenses about three percent, and then the revenue cap going up about three hundred and twenty-five dollars a year. So those are the assumptions that are carried through the four-year projection.
Yeah, and when you look at assumptions, we don't know what the health insurance is, right? I mean, it's ten percent. Um, busing, yeah, it's a three percent contracted rate increase, but there might be a reduction in buses, so that would lower the number of buses, so that would lower the cost of transportation. Um, salary negotiations have to be done every year. Also, the three hundred and twenty-five for the revenue cap for pupil adjustment, that's not set. Uh, as in stone either, is it, for the next four years?
Technically.
Well, I see, I'm, I'm, I'm the optimistic view that it's, it's gonna change, because there's more and more schools, not just Elkhorn, that are in this position, I guess. Is what I'm trying to say.
It's certainly up for negotiation in the next eight months.
For the next budget, and it's, it seems like every budgeting process. You know, you think you can plan ahead and then it just gets tossed out the window, and there's other things that can happen, you could have another COVID, you could have another uh. Um, a war or something else, and, and nothing could be, you can forecast it, nobody can set stone and say exactly what's gonna happen. So, how to approach fiscal flip, cost-saving ideas, reductions, uh, we talked about past, the future cost savings of. Uh, which we could talk about on the recommendations. Um, revenue ideas, expanded programs, basically equals increased enrollment, the options program, open enrollment, how do we. Advertise ourselves better, or how do we promote ourselves better to get more. Uh, outside students to come into our uh district to help alleviate the costs that we're uh so uh. Um, associated with on an annual basis. Operational reverent uh referendum, that's our, nobody wants to be here. That's like, to me, the last thing that anybody wants is to have to go to the public to say, we just don't have any other options. Um, a- and unfortunately, we're at a point where we have to look at that as a possibility to move forward. The board is gonna ultimately make that decision. Um, but uh, looking at both the expenses and the revenues, we're trying to come up with a way to not lose teachers. Not have exorbitant class sizes, not have issues that are going to affect how people uh perceive. The parents specifically perceive the quality of education in Elkhorn. Our recommendations, stability, uh financial stability recommendations. We looked at, like I said, a bunch of different things, like twenty plus uh items of what we need to do. We're not gonna tell you to cut one teacher or cut three buses or do this or that. These are recommendations that we feel we need to get to in order to have financial stability. For our group, in my view, it was all about financial stability. How we get to that financial stability? Hopefully the school board takes into our recommendations, maybe further recommendations through community input over the next X number of months. And then come uh forward for our twenty-four, twenty-five and beyond budget. So we were looking at additional revenue, a one point two five million during twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. And then an additional five hundred, this is just on the revenue part of the next, or, or cutting expenditure, I'm, I should say. Cutting expenditures, so the revenue part is added enrollment, basically. The expenditure part is making cuts. How do we reduce expenditures to meet the needs of the district? And so we're looking at one point two five for next year, and then another five hundred thousand of reductions and more increased revenue. For a total of one point seven five for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year and continuing there on from that.
And I, if I can comment, Derek, I think as you look at that, right there, that was the focus. I can almost swear, everybody in our group, these are some things we have to do, we gotta figure out ways to do it, and. You get to figure out exactly which way you're gonna do it, but that has to continue on and on and on, and that's always gotta be a thing where. With the situation that you're gonna be in, gotta keep finding ways every year, look, relook at every single thing every year, leave no stone unturned. And find out how you can get stuff here and there to cut those uh amount spent.
We're looking at the consideration for cost savings, like I said, there's a list of over twenty. And Bill will present those as well to the uh school board of what.
Hyperlinked, yes.
Yeah, on the presentation, um, they are there. And there's, everything is possibilities of how to reduce student transportation, moving to different uh uh. Class sizes and attrition and, and so many different ideas that to do that. Staff reductions was pretty um consistent, I think in our group to say, yeah, it could be done through attrition, but we don't wanna make layoffs. Because we don't think that the layoffs is the answer. Um, because we feel like with our staff, that attrition's gonna come for some of the savings. When I say attrition is like, the teacher may retire or leave the district, we don't need to replace them, we're able to do a class size or do the other. Uh, different circumstances, we can absorb that.
And that was specific, uh, Eric, to, uh, the, the caveat to that was, um. In specific areas, so for example, if we have a, a shop teacher that's irreplaceable, or that we need that specific position, he's the only one there. We have to replace that individual versus letting somebody go that we've got like fifteen of them type of thing.
Right, that's uh basically on the attrition part, thanks.
I, I think that was a really important message that we can get to the attrition or the budgetary reduction numbers without. Costing people their job. Doesn't mean they may not be asked to do something else to fill in that shift in.
Right.
But that we can get there without layoffs, which has been, I think, a proud history of the Elkhorn area school district for a long time.
And, and again, that's, that's something that Elkhorn should be proud of, and, and we should hopefully get through the attrition area, but nothing's guaranteed. In the long term, because we don't know what our enrollments will be in, et cetera, et cetera. Again, it's a, it's a planning purpose. Recurring operational referendum, we didn't set a date, we couldn't, we were torn, we don't know. Um, you know, that's why it says April, November, what's the best date, what's the best time, that needs to be discussed with the board. Um, cause everybody has different ideas on that. We looked at doing a phased or step approach to minimize the impact for, for taxpayers. I also think this um, that when you do that, you're, you're trying to make it so. You're not getting hit like dramatically in that one year, it's trying to get it in over that uh phase period. Four-year phase to schedule in only what is needed for that year. So even though it doesn't, and you'll see in a minute when I go through it, it doesn't. That, when we're, when we're talking about the referendum, does not actually meet everything that we need to do, but it does. We, we tried to come up with a way between the budget reductions, additional revenue and the referendum to minimize the impact to the taxpayer, because we're all. Like, we gotta look at the taxpayer number one, number one, number one. The debt service, which is Fund Thirty, that you, and, and people think, well, you just, you spent too much on building or whatever, you could just reduce it. No, that's taxed uh differently, it's not part of the operational cost for the school district. We have to look at the debt service about paying off existing debt using um cash and debt, uh debt uh diffusions. Basically using the money that we have either uh uh. Having the, what's called the Fund Thirty for um uh being able to utilize only for uh. That reduction, been built up through um uh renegotiation of good uh interest rates. Has been built up through uh taxation purposes or whatever. It's going to allow us over three to four years to be able to take some of that money that's in the Fund Thirty to be able to reduce the Fund Thirty impact. That's the overall tax impact, it's not the impact for the operational cost, it's the impact for the taxpayer. And that's what, sometimes people look at that and they don't quite understand, is the debt service and the operational. And then the community service are three different areas. Where we have the problem in spending is, uh, and revenue is in the operational part of it. This debt uh cash and, and debt diffusions allows the debt, or allows our tax levy to lower. And it also refutes our, and uh by paying off uh the call, we'll know it's now your interest pay uh payments. Just like a mortgage when you pay, add your interest rate uh or interest cost go down as well. Maintain liquidity to minimize the need for short-term borrowing, borrowing along with continuing strong financial position. I'd read, and I talked a little bit about that before. I'm not sure, and I didn't get into enough with Bill to know, over the long term, what point that gets to about the fund balance to mitigate. Short-term borrowing, we might need to do that at some point over the, uh, towards the third and fourth year. It won't be great, it won't be drastic, but I don't know if he has enough or the Elkhorn School District would have enough. So there may end up being some short-term borrowing. Hopefully the interest rates go down low enough that it, that's not gonna be a huge impact as far as borrowing costs uh for the short term on that. But the, the liquidity Elkhorn has had has allowed us to do a lot of good things, it's saved money. Put money into the schools, into the teachers, into the aides, into everything versus into paying the banks.
I think, Eric, too, that when you're looking at that short-term borrow, a lot of that depends on state has. Days on the calendar, they mark down, yours when you're gonna get your state aid, but they can change those, as I said before. And so if they move something, you gotta pick up all your uh. Everything you gotta pay for in between time, you got bills come through, you know, and everybody wants a paycheck, you gotta do that. And so you gotta have the money to do that, they can change whatever they want and you're, you're kind of on your own with that. So it's just something you kind of gotta be careful with as you, as you go down the line and, and keep that money there to, to be able to work with that.
Thanks, Bill. So it kind of brings it up to a point where we're gonna talk a little bit now about how do we get there. Well, I talked about two different things, I talked about the budget additions and, and reductions, and. And that shows up the savings or length for. Uh, if you look up your, you know, your, your first column is the budget current year, okay, that's where we are, that's how we got there. That's how we uh ended up the year, or are projected ended up the year of being short two point three million. And um, that in, in at eleven thousand, three dollars a uh, uh base revenue cap. Moving now, let's, you know, for twenty-four, twenty-five, we, we looked at, okay, first year, we're going to reduce or. Uh, cut and then hopefully additional revenue of one point two five million, that was the uh committee's recommendation. Uh, pretty strong majority. And we're gonna need, if we didn't do that, and you took out the one point eight, then that would end up. Uh, coming off the, that dip line right there, which would come from the fund balance. And it's not a sustainable path, it's not a sustainable way for the district to be able to control its budget and provide for the students the way we are. So we were looking at, and we're talking about it as a phased-in uh referendum approach. So the uh bottom uh dollar down there, you're still taking one point seven three million. On uh the pink line, we're still taking that from the fund balance. There was a discussion in the group of, well, how much should we be, you know, what is a good rev uh uh. What percentage or what amount or what dollar amount is a good amount to have in your fund balance? To provide for a stable, quality uh top-level type of school district. Um, where is that number? There's no, nobody came up with a magical number. Um, uh, you know, we, we were hoping to get to maintain an eighteen percent, I think was one time talked about. And uh, we actually, as you can see by the fourth year, we're below eighteen percent. But this was where we came up with, to be able to come up with a number for our referendum that we feel is. Is, is showing the district, the people, the residents, the taxpayers, that we're doing what we need to do, and best that we can do. So hopefully mitigate future problems. So it ends up the one point uh, for next year, it's one point two five, open at the line at four. And then we were talking, remember I said we were gonna add five hundred thousand for the second year? Which is one point seven five, and then that carries over to the uh last two years. And the referendum, we tried to keep it at, well, the one point eight, one point eight, one point seven, one point seven. It's like, is a constant number throughout there. Um, and if you look then on the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, uh, the pink line, okay, first year, we are still gonna take. This is on general fund, okay, I just wanna make sure everybody was saying that, the general fund. We're still drawing money for the general fund in the first two years, three years. Uh, basically, oh, four years, but the big hit is in the first year, that's still needing operate, to meet operational needs, and. When people really, when they look at that, is that's a, it's not a total Band-Aid approach, but it is. Not the best approach in order to maintain fiscal responsibility, because at some point, that one point seven million is gonna go away. Even no matter what you're doing, and you're gonna have to make up for that in your fund balance through, through short-term borrowing costs. Uh, lower pot rating for future down the road. So going down, uh, looking at, all right, we're gonna increase uh the one point eight. Uh, million dollars through a uh referendum for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Then you keep moving down a little bit, uh, additional tax impact, that is, it's significant, it's not, it's not a small number, it's a hundred and sixty dollars. That was not acceptable to us as a, as a group, we tried to figure out, well, what can we do to continue to make sure that we're right for the. Uh, community, so that's where the cash debt service cash offset. That we're able to, for the next four years anyhow, um, being able to reduce it by seven hundred and twenty thousand each year. You don't wanna do that all in the first year because, A, might not be able to, uh, because of the, uh, when the lines are called, and et cetera. B, it just creates such a problem for the next three years of how you're going to balance your budget or keep the tax rates lower. Because that, yeah, you could put it all in one year, but that's not gonna change how much you're gonna tax for the next three years after that. So we spread it out over the four years, reducing it down to the bottom of. Uh, additional tax impact for three hundred thousand, well, let's do the one thousand is thirty-two cents. Uh, per thousand, but nobody really understands that, they wanna know, what am I gonna pay? Um, and that's um, the three hundred thousand dollar property value that was used there in the first year would pay an additional ninety-six dollars. Um, uh, based on the best guess projections of where we know where we are today, or what's gonna be a year from now. Um, and that, uh, then, and then moves forward uh from that point, based on the increased revenue. Um, uh, adding one plus each year onto that. Over the period of four years, if you wanted to look at that, I think Bill's gonna talk about that a little bit more. It's right about, uh, was it close to six hundred, was it?
Terms of.
Total.
Yes.
Yeah, and that, that's basically cumulative, but we're trying to come up with a plan. So each year, we are only meeting our needs for each individual year, not hitting everybody at once. And then moving forward, but each year looking at it to try to minimize the tax increases each and every year. Best to the ability to be able to maintain a school district where we are, maintain our financial strength. Maintain our core principles of what we want our school to look like, uh, as far as our district to look like. To maintain a positive atmosphere, a positive outlook from not only the citizens here, but the students who are coming in, and the parents looking as well.
Just, just to summarize. Uh, I don't think you're gonna be able on that chart, but I, I've got another chart where it's gonna show that a little bit better, but just to clarify for everyone here. What this projection demonstrates is, is exceed the revenue cap dollar about the first year, one point eight million dollars. An additional one point eight million dollars the second year, an additional one point seven the third, and an additional one point seven before. Right, just to make sure everyone understood, that's what those numbers represent.
And Bill does have another picture that he'll talk about, or, or I will. And Bill does have another picture that he'll talk about or or I will be able to when it shows a little bit bigger. So the the looking at, well, are is Elkhorn alone? Is Elkhorn the only one that's having problems? No, Elkhorn's not. Uh Walworth County Schools, and I'll touch on maybe on one more just because it's in the news. Um uh operational reference to exceed revenue cap for the prior two years. There's a list on your left hand side there. Elkhorn's bill um is on that side. And uh other school districts are having the same issue. And and they're moving forward the same way. Burlington has uh got one set for February. Elkhorn, we don't know if we're even gonna do it and when it's gonna be. Lake Geneva is still, they're they're looking at it the same way we're looking at it. Williams Bay is going in April. Lynn Bluefield Township and Walworth are both in the same process. We are looking at it. Undetermined when, if, how. There's gonna be more added to the list on the right. It there, it's just when you read. Out in Monroe or I go and and I worked at River Valley School District and uh I used to work, my sister used to teach up in Wausau. They're all looking at it. They're all in the same position. Kenosha is one that I was gonna bring in the news. They just looked at. Uh closing down multiple schools, fifteen million dollars in in uh. Uh difference between their revenue cap and what they could do and they have to come up with maybe fifteen millions a lot. They're a big school district, obviously. But they're looking at uh worst case scenarios as well. And there's gonna be others. I mean, that list on the right, that's just Walworth County. Brad, the uh State General, uh talked to friends around the state. This is everywhere. Um this is not an Elkhorn problem. This is a problem that the state doesn't wanna deal with. They think that it should all be local and I kind of agree with them. To a point, but nobody wants to see their property taxes increase. Unfortunately, sometimes you have to do the worst case to get to that point. And we're trying to come up through the group, spending seven, eight uh Monday nights. To come up with a best case scenario to provide a blueprint for the school board. And I don't envy the school board. They have a lot to uh. To uh mull over over the next uh month before uh we get to the point of needing to determine whether or not you're gonna do a. Referendum in April, two more months if you're gonna do one in the fall. But it's it's something where the options are much more um dire in my. And and a lot of people's views, not everybody, a lot more dire uh situation if we do not have a balance between additional revenue. And the costs that are gonna be incurred because a lot of sacrifices done by the school district. At that point, I I it's just amazing. I wish more people could look at everything that's already happened over the last ten years to get where we are now. To be able to unfortunately be at the uh position that we're in now uh because we've had to control our costs. We continue to control the cost. It's just gotten that much tighter now with reduced um enrollments in Elkhorn. And where our property values are that we need to look at where we are. Nobody wanted to be here. We're kind of forced to be here.
It's when the state departed from pegging the revenue limits to CPI or inflation. They also turned and said, if you need more money, go to referendum. And and the state legislators, they made that conscientious decision that we're not going to increase the taxes. And we're not going to increase property taxes to keep up with inflation. The local communities can vote to do so or not. And like I said, that gap, if if we did have it back to inflation, we wouldn't need to go to referendum. That accounts for well over eleven million dollars in revenue since Act Ten. That we're lacking in keeping up with inflation. If we have that, that's well below anything that we're looking at.
Yeah, it's amazing. When you look at that number, you're thinking about the referendum of one point eight billion versus the eleven million that we would have. Or a billion to have. We wouldn't, I mean, I don't think anybody would say we'd be spending all that, but it would have been an ability that we wouldn't be in the position we're in today. So um I there was a question, but I think now we're gonna turn it over to uh.
Yep.
The minority uh report, which we knew was a possibility when we started it. Because it's very difficult to get twenty people, say nothing about three people. They'll always be on the same uh. Thanks, Cheryl.
Hey, I am Cheryl Donner. I'm a community member on the um committee, but I'm also a parent here. I have two boys that um one has gone through the school and one that's almost finished going through the school. So um I am representing um uh. Part of the ad hoc committee that is not in favor of an operational referendum at this time. Um that group is a small percentage of the committee because you should note. That a majority of the committee members have some type of a financial benefit or tie to the school. Either being a current employee, a former employee, a spouse, or some other financial interest. Um the group, um this group that is opposed likely represents the majority of the EASD community. So while we recognize and appreciate the importance of providing quality education to our children, we do not feel like.
I have to go back. Cheryl, I I know I disagree with that.
That's a pretty broad statement.
That's.
Wait, what?
That's not Jason back. You saying that the minority report represents the broad. Broader majority of the.
I said it it like, okay, that's that's fine. It's fine. Okay. Can I start over here?
Yeah.
Um, okay, so. The the point to that is being that there was a lot of people that were on this committee and I didn't wanna have to go here, but you've taken this here now, Jason. There was a lot of people, there were a lot of people that were on the committee that had their hands in the honey pot, okay?
And there were a lot of people who did.
That is the, there, there was a lot more. This is my time, okay? And this is exactly why we're doing this minority report, okay? So we appreciate and recognize the importance of quality education to our children. However, we do not feel that an that an operational referendum is the most appropriate or sustainable solution for our community. Just as your family needs to address current economic realities, making cuts and substitutions and or make ends meet. It's important that our school district do the same. We understand that our school district requires financial resources to operate efficiently and maintain the high standards we aspire to. However, in that pursuit, we must not. Uh we must be mindful to treat our ta- to not treat our taxpayers as an endless source of funding. We should continue to burden our, we should not continue to burden our community members with increased taxes. Especially when many are dealing with challenges such as increased childcare, healthcare expenses. Increased groceries, gas, utility costs, and job insecurity. It's important that we find ways for the school to operate efficiently and find alternative approaches to our budgeting and resource allocation. This was the hope that I had when I joined the ad hoc committee. That I would be able to help identify those places to save costs and find opportunities for the district. To tighten a purse and avoid a referendum rather than just having to blindly support one. We respect the process of that hot committee and the presentation that was made tonight. However, as you consider your strategy for moving forward, we'd like you to consider these five points, okay? The first one is another referendum would likely fail. Our community members are informed and involved. They understand the implications of a no vote. The underlying issue is that taxpayers typically view their tax contributions in a holistic manner. They do not discern between the various fund allocations they are contributing to as a school budgeting committee does. They simply know that they are currently contributing a significant portion to support the school. Given a substantial financial commitment on the three referendums we're currently supporting. Is important to consider the strain that an additional referendum will put on our community members. Most community members just received their twenty twenty three tax bills, which put these additional levies at the top of their mind. Community members expect the district to act responsibly with their the resources they are providing. And expect to see great effort made to balance the budget by by cutting operational expenses. Second, carefully consider whether referendum truly addresses the root causes of the challenges our schools are facing. Are there cost cutting opportunities that we can consider? I did a quick review of the budget and I identified over two hundred thousand dollars in potential cost savings. That would not impact the educational level of programming. Can we find additional opportunities if we really push ourselves? Are there peripheral programs that can be reduced or eliminated? The Wisconsin Constitution states, schools shall be free and without charge for tuition to all children. Between the ages of four and twenty. The majority of the spend for the community engagement programs, which is over seven hundred thousand dollars in total. Primarily benefits community members outside of this range. Why are taxpayer dollars meant to be allocated to the school district being used to support these types of programs? We should consider reducing, eliminating, or shifting responsibility for those programs. To free up some taxpayer dollars to fund the additional operational budget, which we have a drug, which will have a direct impact. On the education of our students. Are there other other budget approaches that could be considered such as reviewing administrative? Processes and support services to identify redundancies and opportunities for streamlining operations. Reorganize departments, eliminate duplicate roles, find ways to reduce and encourage energy saving practices. Consider outsourcing non-core functions to specialized companies. Collaborate with local businesses or community organizations to sponsor specific programs. Implement wellness programs for staff to reduce healthcare costs in the long term. Third, be cautious incorporating school choice revenues into the initial budget planning. There are many outside factors beyond our control that will impact families' choices, which can lead to flung fluctuations in enrollment. This may be an unreliable revenue stream that could lead to financial pitfalls in the future. Balance the budget based on local students first before layering in the benefit of school choice revenues. Fourth, exercise fiscal responsibility in the application of non-recurring funds. Here should be given to the application of grant or donated funds to avoid creating an unsustainable perpetual cost burden. And fifth, finally, maintain open communication with the community. Understand that not everyone in the community has a personal stake or vested interest in the school. Which leads to diverse views and priorities. Open conversations will help those thoughts and concerns come to light. I remind the board again that this group is in favor of supporting our schools and their mission. Our request is that the school board act as a responsible steward of our community's resources. And commit to making the tough decisions that will enable our school district to remain sustainable into the future.
Thank you, Cheryl. Um I just wanted to add one thing to what Cheryl's saying. Uh I'm speaking for myself. I don't have a vested interest in. The the school district anymore, not since two thousand and six anyhow. And I pay over twenty five thousand dollars uh in taxes to the school district. Or to the Elkhorn uh uh. Well, everything, my whole tax goes with it. So uh it's going to affect me, but I do not have. I just wanna make that clear. I don't think Bill does. Uh uh so I just wanted to hit that. So just following up and Cheryl uh be included as well for questions that the board would have. Um I unless uh Bill, you have more you wanted to end before we did the question and answers?
It's up to the board. I mean, I can review these or we can do them some other time.
Is there a T L D R on it? Basically, just a shorthand version of what you said?
Yeah, I mean, I it wouldn't take me but probably two, three minutes to go through it real quick. Um so if you click on the first chart, what I tried to do, and this really gets to the context and Cheryl, I think you you mentioned this. Kind of the holistic kind of approach in terms of when people receive their taxes, and I guess as everyone got their tax bill maybe last week or the week before. If if you do what I do, which is you look at the bottom line, did your taxes go up? Did they go down? And then you start looking at the details and of course, the largest jurisdiction is typically the school district. And then what happened there and then what happened with all your municipality. So. As part of the projection, what I just wanted to share with with the group here is I took a look at. Based on, we got a two-year budget. We pretty much know what state aid is gonna be next year. Based on the assumptions and the projection. You can look at what's the overall tax levy for the school district gonna look like over the next three or four years. Now, these are projections, obviously, but what you'll see in blue section there is is our tax rate or mill rate. And I assume a three percent increase in property values. I didn't want to assume, you know, this year went up sixteen percent. But we know most of that, if not all of that, was was basically appreciation of market value. So I used the three percent across the board, which is what we've been using. And it's likely our mill rate or tax rate will go down next year if we use the debt service. And just use our operating budget within the revenue cap perimeters. And and that's what you see there is kind of that six point five numbers is the per thousand tax impact. What I added to that then is the operational referendum, which was that fifty three cents, you may remember from what when Eric presented earlier. That gets you at about seven point oh three. So the impact for that first year is about twenty two cents per thousand. Or about sixty six dollars out of three hundred thousand dollar property value. And then the increase from that is what you see for the next three years. That's what this chart represents. That makes sense? Then I think I put a graph together. It basically shows the same thing. It's just in a graph format. So uh that's all it is.
Okay. Wow, that was a lot.
You repeat that, Eric.
Well, I'd just like personally say thank you to all of you who participated on the community, on the uh committee. I know that that was a lot. It was a big time commitment and um I. I I seriously appreciate everything that you guys did and talked about. You're right, we have, we have a lot of tough decisions to make. Um and it's not gonna be easy, but um if there are other people that, I think we had two people fill out cards. That wanted to make a public comment. Um so I'm gonna go ahead and open it up.
I just said, I um for the public comment, back to this, the uh. I I really appreciate the way that this was laid out, you know, uh this was fantastic in the monhour report. I really appreciate that information too. And when we go to the community and one thing is, you know, talking to the community and having them understand and Eric and Bill, I think. Uh you you guys being a a voice, you know, you said you you get, you take calls at all hours and whatnot. Thank you guys for being a voice and having that, you know, non-board, non-school affiliation that you guys dove into this and. Cheryl, your your side too, you know, people can reach out to you guys and ask you guys questions.
Absolutely.
I think that that would be really helpful to you, to Ted, people in the community, you know, not going to us or 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 Jason. But to you guys, I think that'd be really helpful. I appreciate that offer too.
Yeah, and recognize that Devin and and Ed were both on that committee as well, so.
Call him.
Yeah, I I think the committee came up with a lot of good ideas and directives for the board. I think the consensus doesn't mean a hundred percent.
Right.
It's but it was a significant majority of the group that came up with that recommendation. And I'll be honest, the the one point two five million reduction and or gain in revenues, that's significant. In my decade since I've been here, we've never faced that amount in one year. And it will require, I mean, you can't reduce that amount without having increases in class size. Without, we're not a declining in Roman district in the sense of total head count.
Right.
So, you know, when you've seen like Delamond, Ariane, or Lake Geneva, oh, they reduce staffing by twenty thirty staff near. Well, they had to have, that was on years of declining head count. So they had more staff than. Um I don't wanna say what is needed, but that they could still keep relatively decent ratios. So I just wanna be clear on that. That being said, and as part of that committee, I I agree with that recommendation. I believe we can get to that point. What I don't believe is reasonable or practical is not having. The additional revenue via the referendum and facing an eight million dollar reduction over the next four years. To operational costs that the district will not look the same.
Right.
Can the district do it? Yeah, we. Can the district do it? Yeah, we said we didn't hire anybody for the next three years. We could get there. You would be looking at class sizes of thirty plus. You would be looking at, you know, things like no transportation in the city. I mean, you'd look at, it would look significantly and substantially different. To the point where I think the strong consensus felt that we would also jeopardize the open enrollment revenue. So what is projected as an eight million dollar shortfall over that four-year period, you might as well add the positive five plus million dollars that were there in open enrollment. Because at what point do people say, oh, wait, it's not the same district, it's not worth driving my kid there by that basis?
So Julie, the only thing I wanted to say before we went into the public comment here is on the budget reducing savings ideas, there is a column that says to be considered or reviewed. We went through as a committee and each one of us had a voice on whether or not we felt like this, that specific idea was worth something for the entire board to actually look at.
Sure.
Some of them were terrible ideas, but we put them on there anyways because, well, we felt it was good to include them. And but it's, so it'll say yes or no, depending on what the committee felt was best work. But they're the, even the worst ideas, in my opinion, are still on there for us to still consider if we wanted to.
Sure.
That's, that's hyperlinked on slide twenty.
Yep.
Can I just make a comment? The committee and you've got, you got kind of two sides recommendations, two different viewpoints, which we knew we were at. Does not necessarily mean that those on this viewpoint are very different from those on the other side. I don't have a connection with the district here. I live in town. I plan to live here for a while. I don't have any children in school. I've got a grandchild who's still in school, who will graduate in four years. And by the time this goes over the cliff, he's going to be out. So at that point, I could say, hey, look at it. But I think you still have, you, when you look at it, you have to look at how you think the best way to resolve the problem is. And there were two different ideas of how to resolve it. But people having both those ideas are very similar people. And I'm guessing if I went to a public meeting, I'm very similar to a lot of people that'll be at that public meeting. I'm retired, et cetera, et cetera. And my social security is going to go up three percent, but my Medicare is going up ten percent. So, you know, you work those numbers and that's how it works. That's the life I live and that's what I choose. And I also pay taxes in the city and I pay for fire and water or whatever else I pay for. And I look at all the things in the city and I try to say, in my view, where is the most important dollar? So if I have to pay five dollars more a month or something, am I paying it to the city? Should I be down there telling them what I think of how they budget, whatever? And I think that's where viewpoints are. And it all comes to the same thing. You got to do what's best. It's just how do you get to those last, those last numbers?
Thank you. Okay, I'm just gonna quickly read a statement for those who are going to make a public comment. Just a reminder for any citizen who is speaking during community participation to complete the sign-in sheet I already have. And the community participation period is an important time for the Board of Education to hear concerns, gratitude, et cetera, of its constituents. That said, prior to making this statement, please be aware that each speaker bears the personal risk if anything they say during community participation of the school board meeting is defamatory, slanderous, or otherwise harmful to another individual. All right, with that, let's get started with Lori Kyle.
I'm Lori Kyle. I've been an employee for twenty-four years. I loved every minute of it, worked with Bill. Know a lot of you and some of you are students. That's how old I am. Own a couple of businesses. I really enjoy finance. We started a dairy farm, started a coffee shop all on our own. I have a whole new respect for Bill, getting down and dirty with this whole thing, the way he handled us. I I'm in complete gratitude for what you taught us. And I do know a lot, and I think you were so helpful to those that even Mr. Wells, you know, he was in the system and he really was like, wow, I had no idea all this. So thank you, thank you, thank you. I did say at one point, raised my hand and said, you are not retiring, and Sue Lively seconded. I really don't mean that. I don't want to put pressure on you. But for me, Lori Kyle, I have grandchildren now. I look at a very wide lens every day of my life. I'm a very Christian conservative woman that seems to have come to a surprise to some people in this district. They think I'm against teachers or whatever. I am so not. I want the best. I spend every minute on Wisconsin Street wanting the best. I have a pulse on Elkhorn. I have my own group, but there's several groups in this town. And the referendum did fail because of several people, not just one group, because no person, woman, man, or whatever, is that powerful. But mostly, I I can't say enough about who we have in charge of the finances. And I think communication is a huge link to trust, right? And at some point, the more communication, the better the trust. And we will get going in the right direction. And that's all I want. So I really, I I put a lot of pressure on myself. I spent hours educating myself, because that's kind of how I fly. And so I do want to thank all of you, because I I know this decision is emotional. It was emotional just thinking about where we were, where we are now. And after Act Ten, I was one of the first to get, you know, sent to a different position. It hurt my heart because I loved my job at the high school, but I did it. And Jason, I appreciated that. Jason didn't, he wasn't the boss then, but that's really hard on the employee because you are in a role that you love doing already. And then, you know, you think about a lot of things that, you know, you guys wouldn't know what that feels like. And so I do respect that, that you were really carefully decide, because nothing's more important than those people in the trenches. I was a trench person. And those relationships that I developed at that high school, they're in my life every day. They own businesses, I've been to weddings, all of that stuff. So anyway, thank you very much and good luck. And I am open to emails, calls. I get them all the time. People walk in and, yes, they're talking a lot about their taxes. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Jennifer Lee. Well, I was going to put together something, but I'm kind of frazzled after the comments about being having hands in my, in the honey pot. My name is Jennifer Lee, and I was a teacher at Westside Elementary for nine years and at Elkhorn Middle School, sixth grade, social studies for an additional seven. I, my husband is also at the high school. I have two children who are seniors. One just finished up her courses and graduated early. And both of my kids are over at the College of Career and, yeah. I am here because I just wanted to reiterate the fact that I am totally in support of us going to referendum. I think if we look back at the previous referendums, we can see that the referendums that we passed were because of things that were going on in society at that time. We passed moving all of the offices from the center of the building to the outsides of the buildings after there were attacks at, for example, Sandy Hook. So they were born out of necessity of what was going on at that time. They're tangible. You could see them. You could get behind it because it's something that drew you into the school district. Perhaps it was doing the additions over on the high school, to the ag department, to the theater, to the fieldhouse, the athletics. All of that stuff, maybe to some people doesn't seem important, but it does contribute to bringing people into our school districts. So when you're looking at open enrollment and the numbers of open enrollees going up, that plays a part of it, whether you want to admit it or not. People aren't going to go to a school that has depleted extracurriculars. They're going to go somewhere that looks bright and shiny, new, where we've invested. And to consider that we've done all of that, made those improvements, brought those students into our school district, which has helped alleviate some of the shortfalls that we've come through, really makes a huge difference. But again, those are things that are tangible. This is a referendum that would not be necessarily tangible to people out in the public. They can't see it. They can't maybe feel it, except for in their taxes, which I completely understand, because I too, even though I have people in the districts and my hands are in the honey pot, I pay taxes just like everybody else. I donate money to the school board. You guys have accepted it this year to fund books about diversity at the elementary schools. I don't have to do that. I do that because I love this district. I think the way that we've approached this is balanced. We've cut some or proposed cutting some budget. We've proposed also adding in some referendum money. Between the two of them, it's it's a balance. It's a balance of both worlds. My mom used to tell me, anytime you're going to go out and you're going to buy something, don't buy the most expensive, don't buy the least expensive. Find the compromise in the middle. That's what our committee did. So I just, you know, being that I was an elementary teacher, I want you to just close your eyes for a second. Okay, I want you to picture a Jenga tower, because I don't have time to actually build one in front of me. Okay, I want you to think about this Jenga tower. And for those of you that maybe don't know what it is, you pull one of the little pieces out and hope that your structure stays standing. Okay, now, take that Jenga board or take that Jenga tower and pretend like you have to cut eight million dollars out of this school district. Maybe you take out ten teachers, pull ten pieces out of that Jenga puzzle or that Jenga tower. Maybe you have to cut sports. I don't, I don't know how you're going to get to eight million dollars, but maybe you cut all of the athletic and all of the extracurriculars. You start pulling those Jenga pieces out and pretty soon your tower is going to crash. There has to be balance. You, you have to be, if you're taking something out, you've got to be putting something in. You take a piece out that doesn't make sense, you've got to put something back in to keep that tower stable and to keep that tower upright. If we don't pass some sort of a referendum and make cuts at the same time, trying to find that balance, we as a district are going to have some major crumbling. And so I just want you to think of that. So anytime you're thinking of, what are we going to pull out or what are we going to cut? Be thinking of it as a Jenga tower that everybody played, or not everybody, but most people know what that is. And as you take pieces out, if you don't put pieces back in or you don't carefully pull them from the right places, it's going to affect some other part of the tower and your tower is going to crumble. Whether it be you cut sports. If you cut sports, you better be ready for a lot of the open enrollment kids to not come into the district. So you're not only going to be losing money on one hand, you're going to be losing students and losing funding on another hand. Same thing with theater. Same thing with offering different types of culinary programs or career in college readiness. Everything is going to have a counterbalance to it. So our recommendation of doing some of the referendum and some cuts at the same time is a balanced approach that should be accepted by a majority, I would hope. So that's all I have to say.
Sure, of course. Yeah. Thank you.
My name's Dan Heel, I'm a resident and also the high school principal. I've been here, it's my eleventh year, thirtieth overall in education. I've never been in a finer district. Two of my kids have gone through the district. They're doing very well in college, very well prepared. I was talking to my eighth grader the other day and and we were talking about my older kid, where he's going to be and what he's going to do. He's like, I'm going to go back to Elkhorn. He's like, I'm going to stay in Elkhorn. You know, I don't know if he will or not, but I like the fact that he likes to think he will. You know, when we look at these numbers, you know, I think it's, it's real easy from the outside to look at the numbers and their numbers, their dollars and cents. When I look at the numbers, I have the staffing profile. You know, we we make sure, we try to make sure that all kids get as much of what they want as they can in high school. And, you know, the more, the more we cut, and we do every year, but the more we do that, the harder it becomes to put that staffing profile together. And, you know, one of the complicated things is when you're putting that profile together, I see people. Because I see positions, I see people that I work with. And then I see the kids and I know some of the kids that want different things. And if I can't run that class, I'm going to have to figure out a way to get that kid that class, one way or another. And the more that gets cut, the harder that it is to happen. I I do believe that we have an excellent high school. I mean, you look at pretty much any major. And we're going to be right on top, you know, in some cases in the nation, in some, in a lot of cases in our area. I want to make sure we keep it that way. I, we can find some places to cut. I I think the ad hoc committee was, was a, it was enlightening. Bill does an absolutely wonderful job of breaking it down and make it understandable, something that's really not that understandable. There were a lot of differing opinions in the, in the, in the committee. But I think it's, it's similar to our nation right now. We have a community. In order for the school to be strong, our community's got to be behind us. We have to have teachers that come in every day, ready to roll. I worry that if we can't pay them, we will start to lose some of them. For the first time this year, we've kind of lost some of our top applicants to other districts, which that's never happened before. And it, it just comes down to pay, you know, how much can we pay them versus the other district? And we, we need to keep top quality teachers. The main thing is I want kids to be happy, successful, and I want to provide, you know, quality citizens going into the world. But as we go through this, I think somebody said it earlier, that, you know, you put us all together and our similarities are much greater than our differences. And I think we're going to have to focus on that as we go through this. I'm always open for questions. I don't have a lot of answers sometimes, but I'm definitely open if people have questions to call or stop by. If you have questions about what goes on in school, stop by, you know, we'll, we'll show you what we can. So I do appreciate the opportunity to be on the committee and, yes, that was John.
Hey, was there anybody else who had a card filled out that?
Since I didn't have a card, I just wanted to add one thing else that I've been approached a couple of times and really struck me this past week. Delman had seventy-two billion per, in twenty twenty-three, Elkhorn had two. That's significant. And why I say that's significant is because I just, if you probably know, but I own that farm that's now going to be eight hundred and fifty apartments down by the bus company. There are two new subdivisions going to be proposed in January, February, I believe, in that, when I was talking to the city, that are going to bring in new homes to Elkhorn. And there's an existing homeowner value of their homes. Schools bring people to the community and they keep people in the community. And the values of your homes is affected by the school district value. And the new people who are going to add to our tax base and bring kids here are going to increase the tax base and bring kids here, which is for additional state aid. So those things are also need to be looked at in a broader sense when you start talking about cuts and reductions in services programs, as Dana mentioned, and things like that. It's big. And I didn't realize until, well, my parents have been passed for three years now, but they rented two of their apartments to people who moved to Elkhorn from their other communities. They didn't, not open enrollment, but they moved here and they rented and sacrificed. They have their kids in the Elkhorn School District. That blew me away, two of them. They only own fourteen. And it's just, it's, it's, I don't know if that's how much around Elkhorn that that is, but obviously it was something. And both of those people and the ones specifically right next door to my parents, they came here because of the school district. They moved here, actually physically moved here to live in an apartment, to put their two kids in the school district. It's big. And people do look at that from outside.
Okay. So we have the ability to discuss now what we heard tonight.
Is there anywhere that you want to do this show later or just just kind of throw it out there for however?
Yeah, why don't you and Ed start, since you guys were on the committee and then?
Go ahead, Devin. That way I won't say all the stuff you want to talk about.
I know, please go ahead. You sure?
Yeah.
Oh, I mean, really, really, there's not, I mean, there were a lot of good ideas put out there from everybody on the committee. from everybody on the committee. I, the, Ed, as we were going through everything, Ed was, Ed and I were constantly just on the backside as much as possible, trying to make sure that we, that we were there, we were present, we were helping, but it was the community's ideas rather than our ideas. And they came up with a lot of good ones. I really look, I'm really looking forward to looking at some of these ideas and trying to find out the best areas to minimize the impact on the day-to-day with the students, but still finding those cost-saving areas that we can find, that everybody could find. And, and just getting to those numbers that we need to get at. Ed, thank you for, like, you, you were a big help a lot of times, trying to navigate the, the two different sides that eventually kinda came there. You, you helped a lot to be able to really kind of bridge that gap to where, you know, where, where, where everybody ended up eventually standing, or not everybody, but the, the, the majority of the committee ended up standing. And, I mean, he did just a fantastic job, just making sure that people were doing their best not, not to just go in there and say, yep, we need a referendum and it needs to be X amount of dollars, but also not going in there and saying, you know, hey, yep, we need to slash up so absolutely everything and, you know, and, and the rest of it, just go to the wayside. He did a good job doing that and keeping us committed to what the original intent was, which is to do the least amount of harm and help the most amount of students.
Thanks, Devin.
Yeah, I, I think, I think for me right now, what's most critical is for us to decide, okay, number one, we're gonna go to referendum and my recommendation to the full board is we, we have to, I don't know what the level is. There's just not enough savings that I'm seeing that, that's gonna get us there without reducing our operating fund to a level that's really, it's, it's putting it, yeah, it's putting it too much at risk. I really think, I wanna say if we, if we go for April, we're rushing it. That's how I feel, we're gonna be rushed through trying to make decisions and trying to make decisions without having enough input from district employees because we're gonna look down to say, okay, we're gonna cut to X plus this. Where are you gonna find it? And I want us to make a commitment to our community that we're gonna do that and have that be sustainable. I just, I just think it's, you know, this is the best time to wait till later in fall. Probably not, but I'd rather do it right the first time than, than rush through it and not have a language be thought out. That's, that's just, for me, I mean, what, what, when would we have to have a language?
The drop, kind of the drop dead date, I think, is January twenty-third.
So unless we wanna meet every other, every other day after the holiday, we'll never, we'll never have enough time to do it right. And I'm just, just, I've been pointing out, kinda like the facts, yeah. As you saw, this committee spent a lot of time, they got some great ideas. And I mean, I, I sat at Cheryl's table and she wanted to be turning over the stones, to be honest with you. And I think she'd still be willing to turn, you know, spend the time to turn over the stones. And I, and I think we can find more cost saves and we, we need to, now's the time to put in the effort so that we can have a sustainable budget. And the community hopefully will respect the amount of time that we're spending on this because we're taking it very seriously. You know, we don't wanna make the same mistakes that we did before. So we're gonna learn from that.
One of the things that, that you, you mentioned just a moment ago was dealing with the, the timing, right? And I mean, I, I, I've said many multiple times, if we go to referendum, and that's still an if, then I believe that it should be later on because it gives us time to be able to prove to the public that we are doing everything in our power to make sure that A, the referendum is as small as possible and B, that the things that we are requesting or saying that needs to be done at the budget for these cost savings, it gives us time to be able to prove that we're doing that stuff. We could go and, and put the budget on on January twentieth or whatever and all the, but it's gonna be all platitudes. It's gonna be, hey, we will cut this later on down the road. And then, I mean, far too many times, that just doesn't cut or whatever, and so it gives us time to be able to prove what we're, what we're about, what we're trying to do.
I would agree with your point.
I mean, what would make sense to me is, is to have people on the board that wanna, you know, maybe it's the entire board, but we've gotta take the initiative, let's start with the time in on it now, I'm not gonna wait.
No, I think, I think it needs to be the entire board having this discussion. I don't, I don't see it being productive having just the three of us. You know, two of you, two of you have already kind of gone through this process, I feel like at this point. At this point, we need, no discussions needed.
Well, a part of the problem with the, with, we couldn't go over the full budget in the short amount of time that we had, whereas most of us, like, all of us here with the exception of Kathy have had that in-depth meeting, that the in-depth knowledge of what the, what the actual.
It'll also give us time for our March meeting, you know, when we do our budget review with Bill in March to take a, a deeper dive when we do that budget retreat.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I'm just, I'm just, I want input from the, the rest of the board on, okay, next steps, okay, what do you guys? We wanna have it as a fixed agenda item, do we wanna do some things in closed session?
What are our options? Do we, we don't really have options for closed session, do we?
No. We could schedule additional budget retreat, I think you would consume a, I mean, typically when you set up an ad hoc committee, you do that to have them do the work and then bring the recommendation to the full board, so you back on the recommendation. What I'm hearing is, you know, the full board wants more time, I think, to process what that ad hoc committee recommendation is. I mean, the group did spend is it twenty-plus hours? I mean, going through and, you know, I've never had an ad hoc committee spend that much time on bringing a recommendation forward, that's kind of the, the purpose of it. I wouldn't recommend trying to replicate now the board as a whole, why do the ad hoc?
Right, yeah.
But we do have the budget retreat in, in March. Obviously, if it's not, if there's a strong consensus, yep, we, we don't wanna consider April, that's too soon, then having steps in place, the next opportunity is either August, which I think the ad hoc committee really didn't feel that's a great idea, being in the middle of the summer. But then that would be the, the November primary. My recommendation would be not wait until the, there's nothing that prevents us from making that decision prior to that minimum timeframe, if that makes sense. So I think if, if it's not going in spring, I would recommend by the end of the school year, having a timeframe of meetings where the board can make a decision by the end of the school year. There is a board election in that process, so. You know, maybe all three incumbents get re-elected and that continues that continuity, there is that chance that that doesn't happen, so then you have to re-educate somebody else. Now, this board as a whole could always make a determination, a resolution, and that could always get, you know, where there is that timeframe and you're still before that drop dead date, it could get modified. But I guess I would recommend if, if our regular budget retreat is in March, I wouldn't necessarily recommend we wait until and perhaps look at having a special meeting of the board just focusing on referendum discussion going through.
Yeah.
Doing
If you're like.
More in-depth conversation or some of that education piece that Bill went through with the entire ad hoc.
But one of the things that we don't have to do that we did with the ICAC committee, with the general, general board is, is we don't have to go over a lot of that, the background.
We, yeah, we've got the education.
Right, we know, so we're just gonna be looking at just the stuff we're looking at.
Right. I mean, personally, I, if we're looking at trying to cut, what was it, one point?
One point two five.
Somehow we, I mean, I don't wanna just totally lay that on Bill's shoulders. Certainly. Certainly, you're gonna have some recorations for that, but I feel like we have to look at that as a board.
Yes.
Make those decisions, that's, yeah, that's why, and that's not something that I think we're, we're gonna accomplish tonight. No, 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 I, I certainly don't want people to be doing that tonight. Right, that's, yeah.
I mean, one of the, one of my items that the committee said we should examine the Fund eighty items.
Yeah.
You know, that, that deals with a broad spectrum of things. That's something that I would like to get community you know. They're paying for it, they should know what they're paying for and either support it or not support it. We need that input, so.
Would it be helpful for the board, I was just thinking of maybe a January meeting to kinda lay out a process and a timetable. And what I'm hearing here is, is, again, the spring election is off the table, generally speaking, so there's a possibility of a November, so, so what would be the steps and the timeframe? And there's certain decisions we make in a typical school year, budget year on staffing and all of those things, so, so it needs to be sequenced in such a way that makes sense, plus, you know.
Cause we're looking at trying to get the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five budget in this, does waiting till November allow us?
It, it's like the last opportunity. But, but I think we, we also need to have a contingency plan if that, you know, if there's a November and it's not successful, what does that mean?
Yeah.
No, I mean, we know what it means, it's gonna affect our fund balance, I mean, that's what's gonna happen. I mean, it, it's, it's not like the fiscal cliff is right around the corner, it's a couple years away, it sure won't help it. Will it be, will be that much greater risk? If the referendum that we choose to in November, or whatever that all is, that doesn't pass, we don't make all the cuts that we've committed to, yeah, we're, we're getting really deeper into troubles.
Because in reality, if, if you looked at a November referendum, at the end of October, you would normally adopt the budget for that twenty-four, twenty. And, and you probably have two different levy amounts. One contingent on the referendum, one kind of pass fail. And that's typically what districts do with it.
Yeah.
Well, and there, there are things on here that I mean, the one that absolutely everybody hated, the idea of the center schools. Like, every person on that committee was like absolutely no. No, no, but it, it was just, it was, we were just, there were just ideas getting thrown out. And, and, but everybody absolutely hated that idea. This was a, realistically, this is a list that Bill was like, hey, or maybe it was Jason and Bill, I don't know, but it was.
Oh, I, I wouldn't say that I absolutely hated it, and neither did, I also say neither did Mr. Wells, but
It was on a list.
I recognize the visceral reaction to that, but the reality is that if we have to get to a point we don't have support from referendum, it's an efficient model to manage staffing. And it allows for reduction of staffing and balancing out, does it? But there was a strong visceral reaction to not having center schools.
Well, like, like stuff like that, like, that was a million-dollar idea. If we wanted to go down that path line, which everybody said no, it's very clearly on it, well, Jason. Everybody was like, no, I don't like that idea. But if, if it comes to that fiscal cliff, that's something that we have to look at. With that something, but there's other things on here also that, that kinda matched that, not, not in terms of as high a number, but a pretty high a number that we could look at to, to balance if, if things don't go the way we need it to. The board likes it, so.
Jason, we're done with public comment at this point?
So.
Can we have him ask a question?
I don't even have a question, I just want something clarified.
Go ahead and, I mean, he was a president, go ahead.
These are for members that weren't on the committee, but Devin and Bill, or Ed and Bill, right. The first time referendum was mentioned partway through our journey, the number that was there to the number that was recommended, there's a seven hundred thousand dollar difference. It was seven hundred thousand dollars higher, and that's why you ended up at one point two and a half million for your cuts. Because it was shifted over to cuts. So that, that's important.
So that was a, yeah, that.
So I think what I'm hearing is next board meeting or the following one in January, it will put together a proposed calendar of timeline to have those discussions. It is important because we will start having, what I've communicated to the administrative team is knowing that we're looking at one point two five million. Regardless, you know, I had the board said tonight, let's move forward with considering the ad hoc today's recommendation of the first meeting in January. We can discuss it then and discuss again at the second meeting. Either way, that was one point two five million. I'm operating under that premise that even with a, a longer prolonged discussion, that I think there's a consensus around looking at the one point two five million going into that next year. With that in mind, and, and working under the premise of not doing a, a reduction, forcing, laying people off, I need to start, and what we've shared with the team, is really scrutinize any resignation from this point forward and looking at it through a hiring increase type strategy and only posting for the absolute where we don't have someone to shift over, we absolutely aren't gonna have that. So I think as we move forward on those, especially the professional staff positions, ones that aren't mandated by IEP time and minutes, meaning, you know, any of those type positions that we're not legally obligated to. I believe we'll put down and have discussions related to those specific positions with the board and as those opportunities come up, rather than just giving the green light to go ahead and post. So I would anticipate us having personnel discussions more so from this point forward, as those opportunities come up, because I think that's an important piece to consider, you know, and before making those decisions and locking this in on, on those. So I'll bring those recommendations that may need, you know, more, because those do involve individual contracts and so forth, they have reassignments or the person of those type, when it's discussing an individual, would be in a closed session type setting. So I would anticipate just more of those, like we have in the past when we talked about reassignment or potentially still. All right, I think an important message that I've also shared with the team is that everybody who has a job in the district, we're really committed, the ad hoc committee was committed as well, that we'll still have a, a job. Because we have thirty, between twenty-four to thirty professional staff that we hire on a yearly basis just from a turnover. That's, and then when you look at the support staff numbers, especially special ed aides and some of those other positions, we have quite a bit of turnover, same with custodians. So we can get to numbers that we need to get to. I'm not saying that it's pleasant or that it doesn't impact other staff, but we get it without going at the end of the year and saying, okay, you twenty people are eight people, so.
Right. All right.
So we're gonna start, we're gonna get a, we're gonna get a, in the future, we're gonna get a calendar of, hey, these are the days that we're gonna be looking at.
I think that's what we're.
Calendar in place.
Okay, we have a calendar in a plan and in the meantime, also know that anytime there's the personnel buildings that come up, we'll discuss those, we'll just be slower and more deliberate in, in when posting. We'll review those with the board each time, especially the professional staff.
So speaking of personnel, you have some recommendations?
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
Yep, this is our personnel sheet. I wanna see Judy, Ed, for all three years of service in the district as a custodian. Matthew, Natalie, Liz, Beth Ortiz, Emma, Vite, and Isabel Merrill. Oh, and appointment. Sorry, appointment of Liz, Beth Ortiz, Emma, Vite, and Isabel Merrill. Which is the first time I've seen her with Merrill. So disclosure, that is my daughter. That's all I have.
Okay, so looking for a motion to approve the personnel recommendation sheet.
Whether we approve the personnel recommendation sheet for September eighteen, twenty twenty-three, including no. And move to approve whether we approve the personnel recommendation sheet for December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, including new employment contracts. Conditioned on, upon passing the background check and district mandated, mandated drug screening as presented.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded to approve the personnel recommendation sheet for December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Including new employment contracts conditioned upon passing the background check and district mandated drug screening. Can we do this all in favor? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Host. Motion passes. And then just looking for a motion to adjourn. I make the motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Okay, so moving seconded to adjourn, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Andre.
Yes.
Mr. Bear.
Yes.
Mr. Gavin.
Yes.
Listening yourself.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Reckles is excuse, and go to the choir concert, and Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.